I call this the May 28th, 2024 meeting of the Lincoln Board, Lincoln County Board of Educ- I'll get it right in a minute. Call me if you need me, Bill Heath. Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting to order. If you would, please stand. Our invocation tonight will be given by Cory Buckner. Cory is the Chief Executive Officer and founder of Always Endure. His daughter Bella Faith Buckner, she's five years old, graduated from kindergarten this year with the Riverside Homeschool Program. And Bella loves to dance, sing, play dress up, arts and craft, make mud pies, and wants to be a firefighter when she grows up. She brings a smile to the face of all she meets and is truly a joy. And she's the daughter of Cory and Brittany Buckner, and she is their daughter through the gift of adoption. Cory?
Let's pray. Father God, you are King of Kings and you are Lord of Lords. You are the great I am, the beginning and the end. And Lord, we look to you and what do we pray to you? For we're thankful that we have access to come to pray to you through our faith in Christ. That through our faith in Christ, we can come and we can pray to you at any time, anywhere, about anything. Thank you that you are a near and dear, a loving Father who is here for us. What I pray as we meet tonight, Lord, that you will lead, guide and direct us through your Holy Spirit. Father, that you would, that we walk in a spirit of unity, peace. And Lord, we would seek to serve you and to glorify you in all that we do. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Bella and thank you Cory. At this time, Madam Clerk, we call the rose.
Brandon Coley, David Sanders, Danny Walker, Ben Brown, Bonnie Colwell, Terry Lynn Rogers, Jack Ashley, Kate Guin, Mark Mitchell, Randy Bradford, Mary Ann Tackett, Steve Spray, Daniel Eldridge, Jason Nix, Anthony Taylor, Doug Cunningham, Pat Haynes, Tori Young, Ricky Bryant, Glenn Douglas, Steve Guntherberg, Troy Frazren, Jason Hambrick, Jenny Rose Walter. Have nineteen present, five absent.
Okay, nineteen and five. No announcements, no public comments. Would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the April 16th meeting. Commissioner Frazren makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Guntherberg, seconds. Any corrections or questions on any of that? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approve. The Nix, I would like to read our Foster Care Awareness Month. And we have Amanda Griffin with us. Amanda, will you stand up? And if you want to come to the microphone here, I'll come over there and we'll read this together. And one of the real connections too is Cory and Brittany, they're part of fostering children and why don't you just forward read this? Just tell them a little what y'all do for is Always Endure and the home and stuff because it fits in so well with this.
Yeah, so our nonprofit Always Endure is finishing up House of Hope. It's a transitional house for kids in foster care. It's a place where they can go either whether they're newly removed or they're in between placements because of disruption in their care. It's a place where they can go for a week and a half to two weeks, where they can get a comfy bed, where they can get home-cooked meals, maybe for the very first time. Clothes that actually fit and we provide love and care for them that gives the social worker time to find a placement for them where they're not sleeping in that social worker's office because of the lack of, and the difficulty of trying to find a placement for them. So that's in Park City. We're hoping, I think our builder said he's going to put in for a CO tomorrow. And we're really excited to bring this, what is it, just a prayer and a vision to life and as a resource here for Lincoln County families and counties around us.
Thank you. Okay, Amanda, if you'll tell them where you kind of fit in the process of all of this.
Sure. I work for an organization called Tennessee Kids Belong. And I cover South Central Tennessee, the 14 counties in South Central, which is the DCS regions. And we work to build foster-friendly communities. So we, part of what we do is recruitment, we recruit foster families. But we believe that it's irresponsible to recruit families without also recruiting support for those families because it's difficult. As a foster parent, it's hard work. And so we partner with government, we partner with businesses, and we partner with faith communities. So we have an app where businesses can offer small discounts and special offers to help support and encourage foster families. It's also a place where they can see community support and where they have foster-friendly faith communities to show we're a church that believes in what you do and we're going to help support you. So that's a lot of what we do in a nutshell.
That's great because you can be involved in foster care and still not have children particularly in your home, but showing support for those who do care for them.
Yep.
So this is a proclamation from the city of Fayetteville in Lincoln County. Whereas the aim of Tennessee Kids Belong is to change the experience and outcome for children in foster care. Whereas Tennessee Kids Belong aims to make all 95 counties in Tennessee foster-friendly communities. Whereas Tennessee Kids Belong empowers people to recognize that regardless of one's occupation, skill set, and life stage, one has a unique ability and opportunity to impact the lives of children in foster care. Whereas together, we can provide every single foster family the wraparound support of their community from meeting their tangible needs to their own employers to local business supporting their journey. Whereas together, we commit to ensure every child has a home and a sense of belonging. Now therefore, I, Bill Newman, Mayor of Lincoln County, do hereby proclaim May as Foster Care Awareness Month in Lincoln County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to support Tennessee Kids Belong and become foster-friendly. And be it further resolved that Mayor Bill Newman is committed to the continued support of Tennessee Kids Belong and their effort to end the crisis for kids in foster care. Thank you. Thank you. The next item, you should have received 14 monthly committee meeting minutes and six quarterly monthly meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those. Mr. Spray makes the motion.
Mr. Bill, I have some questions and concerns about the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
So if I need to make a motion that we can approve the others, it may be pull that one out to discuss.
Okay, which month is it because it may not be approved minutes. It's what?
The May 2nd.
They won't be approved minutes now. If there's changes that need to be made to those, you need to go to that meeting and get them to change them in their meeting. This is just an acknowledgement that you received these, not approving the minutes.
Because I know we've talked about this before. I don't understand why we don't get the complete minutes.
You do.
Well, these are not the minutes that I'm talking about.
Okay, you receive what we receive in our office.
But I don't think they're complete as well.
Okay, okay. If it's not, if it's not an approved set of minutes, you need to go to that or address that chairman of that committee that you don't think those are approved. Best thing is go to that meeting though, but I would address them before it occurs to.
Well, I've watched that meeting because I wasn't able to go to it. And that was one of my questions is.
Yeah, I can tell you this. If the commission votes to pull that particular one out, that you're, you're not approving their minutes. You're acknowledging that you received them. So there is a slight difference, but if you want it pulled out and the commission votes to pull that one out of the, it's a monthly meeting, so it would be 13 rather than the 14 meetings. That's up to the commission. And if you want to make that motion and they vote positive on it, that can be pulled out.
Well, I make a motion that I received 13 out of 14.
Well, let's be specific. That it be removed, that the May meeting of the Planning and Zoning meeting be pulled out until next month's meeting for acknowledging of receipt.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second to that? Okay, Guin makes, Commissioner Guin makes that motion. Any questions to what we're doing and understand everything? All in favor of removing that one? We're not acknowledging yet. We're removing the, that 14th one, which is Planning and Zoning. Please say aye. Any opposed, no? Okay, let's record the no's. Raise your hand if you voted no. Bryant, Coley, Sanders, Douglas, Eldridge. And we're, it may have failed, I'm not for sure because we only have nineteen.
Okay, Bryant, Coley, Sanders, Douglas, and Eldridge.
Did you call everybody's name? How many was that? Five, so it still passes. Nineteen minus five is thirteen. I need your help a lot of times, Commissioner Frazren. Okay, how many, how many negative votes did we have? Five, you're right. Fourteen. Okay, now I would entertain a motion acknowledging the receipt of the other 13 monthly and the six quarterly.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Commissioner Spray seconded. Any questions on those? All in favor, acknowledge and receipt of those, please say aye. Those opposed, no. And this is supposed to be the easy part of this meeting. So, okay. Now, this is one consideration for approval about changing next month's commission meeting. We had said we were going to change it from the 18th to the 25th. Now, the reason of that is because we did not think at this time we would have the state's certified tax rate. We did get it. So we could still do it on the 18th, but it's up to this commission to what y'all want to do. The 18th or the 25th?
I'm making a motion to move it to the 25th.
Okay, we got a motion to move it to the 25th. Do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Guntherberg. Any discussion? All those in favor of moving it to the 25th, please say aye. Opposed, no? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
I would go back again. Now, you're changing it from.
Okay, this is, this is a motion to change it. But the reason we even proposed, you know, changing it was because we didn't think we were going to have certified tax rate until about the middle of the month.
But we changed budget already, right?
Budget is on the 11th.
So now you don't have enough time in just the week.
That's, that.
Finance to get everything together.
Well, finance approves moving it back.
When?
Today. It's a, I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
It's tough trying to get it done in a week.
It could go any way. I asked, we thought we'd get the budget things together in that amount of time. She thought we'd do it, so it's up to, it's really up to the, you know, before getting this.
Maybe we're getting all the problems done, you know, at the first of the meetings, so. Okay, we have a motion to move it to the 25th. If you're in favor of raising, changing it to the 25th, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10, 11. 11. 11 for changing it.
11 would be.
It's not, it doesn't, okay, but, okay. Those in favor of not changing it, leaving it at the 20, at the 18th, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's some not voting, so.
11 and eight would be 19, that's what we got.
Okay, okay. It, it, it failed. Okay, so with that, y'all want to make, try a motion leaving it the same? It doesn't matter to me and it doesn't matter to finance, so. If it doesn't pass, it probably should stay at the 18th because that's when it's regularly scheduled. So with there not being one, we're going to leave it at June 18th unless somebody brings up another motion during new business. Okay, our next item is consideration for approval of the 2024 county road list. You should have received that. Superintendent Tim Gills here, if you got any questions. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Any questions? All in favor of approval of that, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approve. Our next item, consideration for approval to close a portion of McDougal Road. Superintendent Gill?
How y'all doing? The airport is needing to close that portion of McDougal from say the ambulance service that y'all familiar with. Almost to Coe Park. The land that's behind Heretic will stay a county road, but they're needing this land to have clearance safety zone a truck or something that goes around that road that kills their safety zone. So they're out of compliance at that point, so they're trying to get in compliance. And they will pay for the Gulf Sack at one end and it's called a hammerhead at the other end. They're going to pay all expenses to have it though.
Any question on what we're voting to do? Would entertain a motion for closure of that section of McDougal. Commissioner Spray makes the motion. Commissioner Guntherberg, do you second, was you, or Commissioner Frazren seconded? Okay, well, it's.
I think it is, no, not on this part. You ain't got a resolution.
I think that's another item, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Thank you, Tim.
Anybody who wants a copy of what they're going to do, I've got some, so.
Okay. Our next item, consideration for approval to reappoint Josh McCannan to the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities. That term would expire June 2027. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Colwell makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to appoint Josh Chandler to the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities. Jack Fowler declined another term. And his term, this term would expire also June 2027. Josh Chandler, Josh Chandler, you're with us? Don't believe so. Okay, you should have received a short bio in your packet. Any questions on that? I would entertain a motion that Josh Chandler fill that position. Commissioner Rolls Walter makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Douglas seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Brandon Coley, Mike Keenan, Audro Bradford to the Library Board. Those terms would expire June of 2027. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rose Walter seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next one, consideration for approval to appoint Jeremy Ezell to the Ad Hoc Opioid Committee due to the resignation of Judge Andy Myrick. You should have received that notice from Judge Myrick of why he cannot serve on that. Any questions, comments, and would entertain a motion for approval of that? Commissioner Eldridge makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously passed. Next item, consideration for approval of the TOSHA Resolution. Doug Campbell, EMA Director.
Good evening. You should have in your packets a copy of the resolution that came in from TOSHA. This is a requirement by the county that every seven years we go through our safety and preparedness plan. There was a lot of updates from the 2011. When I was hired in 2017, I did not see any major red lines or updates on the resolution as it's presented for you. It is a 22-page document, but the resolution only covers the first two pages, which this county has to pass to accept. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them from that.
I'd entertain a motion that we accept it. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Taylor seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next two items. Ms. Tracy Perkins, Lincoln County Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. First file is ZR 2024-2. This modifies and clarifies the verbiage for zoning resolution 3.1 regarding guidelines for new cemeteries in Lincoln County. The Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation for this change on May 2nd at their last scheduled meeting. So we're here to ask for a public hearing at the next scheduled commission meeting.
Okay, what's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes a second by Commissioner Taylor. It will be the 20th, 18th because we did not change the date on that. So 5:30 on the 18th.
5:30 on the 18th.
Can we ask a question or no about that?
Yeah.
I was just wondering and reading it, is there something that occurred that has necessitated the change? At first reading it, it seems like common sense, we want to do it. But then the other side of the coin, I know when my father passed away, we weren't prepared and then we had it done on my brother's land and he's gone above and beyond to make it how it's supposed to be. So I understand my initial thought is definitely to vote in favor of that verbiage, but then the other side of the coin is I'd hate for something to happen, the passing of someone that you didn't expect and then not be able to put him on the family farm if you wanted to. Can you explain what's necessitated it recently?
Yes, the Register of Deeds asked for it. He asked for that to be in there specifically because things were not getting recorded before burials happened in cemeteries. And he wanted to make sure the plaits are recorded and, and everything's done properly before the land becomes a cemetery.
I called back today and didn't see if that was what he said, but.
I've got emails.
Okay, this is a call for the public hearings, so this is, you know, you, you can sure, anybody can be here next month, 18th at 5:30 to express an opinion on that. But it's basically one of those procedural things because you could just have somebody buried out in the field and there's no way to get to them. Family can't ever visit them. So if you don't jump through all the hoops on it, you could have graves that would be isolated that could not be assessed as far as visitation is one of the things. All those in favor of approval of call for the public hearing, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next item.
File number 2024-R3 comes before the commission today for final consideration. This is a request to rezone two parcels addressed 263 and 265 Flintville School Road from A1 Agricultural to A2 Suburban Residential. The owner and applicant plan to subdivide in order to change the boundary lines of the two parcels to meet A2 setbacks and separate the restaurant from the residence in order to sell the business. All adjacent surrounding properties are within Lincoln County and Zone Day 1. Property is not located in a flood hazard zone and is accessed by Flintville School Road. Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation on April 4th. And we had a hearing earlier tonight and we had one question about that and we answered that question, I hope. And so we're here for vote.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sanders makes a motion. Commissioner Taylor seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next item, Main Street Report. Ms. Amy Byrd.
Thank y'all. I did cut it down from 15 points to eight points because I know y'all have a long night ahead of you. Hope, maybe not. So I want to talk about mainly what we have coming up. Hopefully you've read in Elk Valley Times or on social media what all we have gotten done the past four months or if you've seen it in our newsletter. But I did want to announce that we have 14 students who will be on our Youth Leaders Council in the upcoming school year. This past year, we had seven, so we're really excited about the growth in our council. We awarded $1,000 in scholarships to their students. So hopefully this next year, we'll continue to be able to grow that scholarship program. And all of that is based on service hours. And cumulatively, those students had over 200 service hours this past school year. So I have a goal of 400 for next year. We have our next Love Thy Neighbor mixer, June 27th at Carousel Horse and Gifts and Antiques. First Saturday has been tremendously larger the past couple of months. We had 4,100 attendees in April, 4,400 in May. And this time, I accidentally left the registration open too long, so we have about 20 more vendors than what we normally have at full capacity. So we may be using the courthouse line for some of those vendors. Brian Nice and Tracy Cowan from 105.5 WITM issued a challenge for myself to mention them on WHNT. And so of course I completed the challenge. So he'll be sitting in a dunk tank at First Saturday to raise money for Hands of Mercy, the Humane Society, and for the Main Street Program. We did get our national and state accreditation completed this year. It was a very lengthy process. The process and the standards had changed this year, so I was very proud that we were able to get that done again. And I also want to remind y'all that you get extra points on grant applications, whether you know it or not, if you have an active and accredited Main Street Program in Lincoln County. For July's First Saturday, it's going to be a little bit different. We are also, I don't know if y'all have seen, we're hosting the Race to Maine. Our main goals for that are to increase awareness and usage of the Blue Way, which is along the Elk River with access points in Lincoln County and the Green Way, which is from Stone Bridge Park to downtown. So there will be four different categories for kayakers and canoeers to use the Blue Way and then take the Green Way up to the square for First Saturday. Trying to bring all three of those together, also boosting local businesses and tourism in downtown and attracting a different group of people, the kayakers and canoeers and people who like to be on the water. This also, one of our goals is to foster community spirit and environmental. This also, one of our goals is to foster community spirit and environmental stewardship through this new project. So we're very excited about that. There may be an appearance by the Blues Brothers. We have an upcoming educational opportunity for any business in Lincoln County, any business that makes a product in Lincoln County. It's a Consumer Package Goods Accelerator Program. We received a grant from Launch Tennessee to do this program. It's an eight-week course with an in-person kickoff at our office, June 18th, and it'll be cover everything from marketing, packaging, financing, and accelerating your product into retail or wholesale opportunities to get Lincoln County products outside of Lincoln County. We're really hoping to focus on our First Saturday vendors. We have a lot of talented cottage bakers and handcrafted goods that they can take their product to the next level. Again, that was because of a grant through Launch Tennessee. Social media outreach, we are now, I mentioned this at the budget meeting, we're now verified digital creators. We've made $100 so far, so we're pretty excited about that. So if you can like and share our content, we make money from it. In the past 30 days, we've reached almost 72,000 unique users on Facebook and 2,000 on Instagram. I expected that number to go down after Sauberger Festival, but it actually grew, so by about 5%. So that was exciting to see. I want to thank Mayor Newman for allowing us to host the Tennessee, the UT Southern Scholars at our office for breakfast this month. Was that this month or was it last month? I can't remember.
I couldn't even add 14 and 6.
You're right. You're right. Well, it was recently, and Bill called me that week, and we were able to pull together a breakfast for community leaders, and we were very excited to use our space for that. I wanted to also note one thing. Does everybody receive my cover letter for the Budget Committee or only the Budget Committee?
Doug, you know the answer to that. Did everybody get her cover letter or just Budget Committee?
Okay, I just wanted to read a little bit about our office. I'll take a couple of excerpts. We converted our office into a co-work space supported by TVA and also under the direction of our State Director and our Regional Consultant. We did sign an extended multi-year lease, and we protected ourselves with legal documents, and this was not public knowledge, but I did ask Joe Edmondson if I could make it public knowledge, but if he gets hit by a bus tomorrow, the building is ours. So I know there were concerns about what we invested in the building, but we did secure ourselves from that aspect. One other thing I want to say is I know a lot of y'all serve on different boards and different committees, and I understand y'all want to advocate for those boards and those committees, but please don't compare us to other boards at the detriment of Main Street. And if you want to have a conversation with me, 931-625-5400, or call our office, it's 40 to my cell at all times. But if you ever have any questions, please call me and ask me questions. I'd love to talk about it with you. And that's it.
Any questions? Thank you, Amy.
All right, thanks, y'all.
Okay, next item, Budget Committee. Commissioner Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee, the Budget Committee of the Lincoln County Legislative Body conducted budget hearings on April 18th, 23rd, and 25th. Next item, we have the Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County met on May the 7th, 2024, 6 o'clock at Lincoln Central Academy. Item one, Mayor Newman, A, Wells Hill Park. Mayor Newman informed the committee that we have a bid of $298,500 from Chad Mullins Construction to do the bathrooms at the Wells Hill Park slash Joey Glegar Nature Preserve. Mayor Newman stated we'll need about $50,000 to complete the project. We, after discussion, we had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, passed unanimously to approve $50,000 from the Economic and Community Development Fund to take care of the items contained in the recent bid, and that Mr. Glegar and/or the Friends of Wells Hill Park will be responsible for any additional infrastructure such as parking lot, paving, fencing, gates, any additional trails that might be put in, and then any leftover funds in the existing account after engineering fees would be returned to the general fund.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Rose Walter made a motion. Commissioner Ewing, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, dead stock removal contract. It's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed six yes, two no, to approve the dead stock removal contract.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move or concur.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Young, seconds. Discussion, questions, or comments? All in favor? I'm sorry, Commissioner Ewing?
I just like, I want to explain to them, well, we have to supplement the farmers when they're running a business. I'm not against the contract, I'm against the tax credit. Why can't the Cowan Association pay more in buildings?
Okay, I'm gonna tell you the same thing I told you in Budget. Every industry in Lincoln County in the last 20 years has got a supplement they brought here. Agriculture is the largest industry, and if you want to think of it as a supplement, you can, but it's a necessity for its public health and for that industry. And not all of the agriculture industry is on a large farm. The stockyard, the animal clinic, their own areas that they deal with dead stock, and there's no disposal at their access unless we do this. And this is on, I think it's eight counties. All of southern middle Tennessee are cattle-producing counties, and this is something that was put together by South Central Development District when we lost the free pickup because of the mad cow disease, that the product that they were picking up could not be used for feed additives. So it's what it is, and that's what it is, and yeah, I stand strongly behind that. Commissioner Cunningham?
It's a public health issue as well, Mr. Chairman. I know back several years ago when that occurred and we lost our original contract, then County Mayor Bevels gave, saw a waste period to check into, and we actually would have to provide some area where people could take their stock. That was the law at that time. If you had a dead cow, horse, whatever, we had to provide a place. That was going to be extremely expensive. You know, this contract is just, it's so much cheaper than anything that we could do on our own, and they may have changed the law since then. I don't think that they have, but you know, it's a real issue, and like, as you said, you've got a lot of animals in this county, and you just can't go out on the side of the road, and that's what would start happening if we didn't have this problem.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Raise your hand if you're against it. Okay, Ewing, Hamburg, Gunther Berg, is that it? Those three oppose. Okay? Commissioner Bryant?
Item two, Director of Lincoln County Schools, Dr. Bill Heath, presented the following. A, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget, 2024. It's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Colwell, and passed unanimously to approve acceptance of the 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget.
What's the will of the Committee on this motion? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Young, seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval? This is an amendment on this year's budget. It's not next year's budget. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, 143 Centralized Cafeteria Budget, 2425, attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Colwell, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and passed unanimously to approve acceptance of the 143 centralized cafeteria budget.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Mr. Douglas, seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
C, 146 Extended School Program Budget, 2425, also attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Hamburg, passed unanimously to approve the acceptance of the 146 Extended School Program Budget.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewing, seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
D, 177 Educational Capital Projects Budget, 2425, attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Hamburg, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, passed unanimously to approve the acceptance of the 177 Education Capital Projects Budget.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rose Walter, seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item three, Technology Director Brad Luna, about laptop leases. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Colwell, and passed unanimously to approve the new laptop leases for the school system.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Nix makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Hamburg, seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item four, Corrections Report of Increases and Deletions per the Lincoln County Assessor, 2023 Tax Year Attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed unanimously to acknowledge receipt of the Corrections Report of Increases and Decreases per the Lincoln County Assessor for 2023 Tax Year.
Okay, would it entertain a motion acknowledging the receipt of those corrections? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell, seconds. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, 101 General Fund Budget Amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed unanimously to approve the 101 General Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move or concur.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor, seconds. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
C, 131 Highway Budget Amendments, they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve the 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Frazerran makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewing, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
D, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed unanimously to approve the 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas, seconds. Any questions, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
E, Financials, and they're enclosed. We have a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed unanimously to approve acceptance of the Financial Reports.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bryant, seconds. Any question on these? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
Item F, Surplus Retiring Deputy Troy Wells Service Weapon. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve surplusing Deputy Troy Wells service weapon at his retirement.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any question or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item five, Chairman Cunningham. Commissioner Rose Walter addressed the committee regarding setting a meeting to evaluate minor subdivision processes and regulations with the Utilities Committee, Planning and Zoning Committee, and an experienced, and an experienced planning and zoning lawyer. That's information. Commissioner Rose Walter also mentioned the possibility of hiring a human resource and grants writer, grant writer. So we have that meeting, Mr. Chairman. Next meeting was held on May the 9th, 2024. All members were present. Item one, committee received documents relating to the 2425 budget. Physical year 2425 enhancement request, that's attached. Consolidated County Budget Worksheet, it's also attached. Budget worksheets were presented to each committee member, for each committee member's review, along with an enhancement request worksheet. Each line was considered and discussed and voted on separately. After consideration of each, a total of $161,500 in one-time costs were approved, and a total of $442,221 in recurring costs were approved. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed unanimously to approve both one-time enhancement requests and recurring requests for the physical year 2425.
At this time, will that be an information item?
We had a motion there, it's up to you, sir.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of that. Commissioner Doug, let me get them, and then I'll get to you, Commissioner Cunningham. Had a motion from Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, recognize Commissioner Cunningham.
I was just asking what exactly we're voting on. Is this the, we're voting on whether to give, because this is just a draft budget and there's nothing to vote on, actually.
We've done that before.
Yeah. We would vote on that next month.
Okay, if it's out of order, we can, you think, if you, you're the chairman of, I'm gonna let you drive the tractor for a while.
Well, the budget would be approved next month. I'm just saying, hey, this is, this is what we're thinking about, and you guys can think about it for a month, although there was, there was something in there.
There was...
It technically, I think, can be treated either way. It can be, if you want to strike that motion, it doesn't matter. Well, we got one at the end, too, that will have the physical year budget in it that we'll say is going for public hearing, and then, like you said, we will approve that, and it requires no action. This was simply put in the minutes due to there was a motion for the one-time and the recurring items. That's the only reason this was put in there.
Yeah, the deal to, I guess, send the financial management about the individuals.
It's later also.
Okay. Okay, we have a withdrawal. Who made the second? Commissioner Taylor? Your withdrawal? Okay. Are there any questions on any of that information on the reoccurring and the one-time on that draft budget? Okay, if not, Commissioner Bryant?
This be pretty much information also. Commissioner Bryant informed the committee that the Personnel Committee suggested a 1% COLA for physical year 2425. After much discussion, there was a motion by Commissioner Colwell, and seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed six yes, two no, to not give a COLA for physical year 2425. I assume that's the information also at this point. Motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Colwell, and unanimously passed to move four individuals to the authority of the Financial Management Committee.
Okay, that was something we needed to vote on?
Yeah, I would think so on that one. Because it doesn't have necessarily anything to do with the budget. There's four members in the Personnel Committee. We met and we talked at length about raises and all the things, and there were four individuals that are on our highest scale, and the scale doesn't necessarily reflect the duties that, even though it's a new scale, doesn't necessarily reflect the duties and some of the things that they actually do. But without just tearing up a brand-new scale... Uh, but without just tearing up a brand-new scale, uh, we were gonna have some issues there. So, there's already a ton of people who work directly for the Financial Management Committee, such as, you know, uh, Finance Director, there's several. Uh, Ricky Pierce works directly for them, and I think we felt that these folks should work directly for those also. Am I, am I saying that correctly, Mr. Ogilvy?
Okay, any questions about what we're discussing? It would move, um, EMA Director, it would move, uh, Information Technology, uh, what's the others that would move to?
Veteran Services.
Veteran Services and Planning and Zoning, was that the four? Okay. It would move them to, uh, Financial Management out of, uh, uh, where we have them now under the, um, last year's proposed, uh, steps in, in there. Any questions on it? Doesn't mean that it's going, anything gonna change under it, it just takes them out of the, um, uh, the regular steps that, uh, that have been defined.
I would concur with that recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Sanders. Questions and comments?
Do they still get merit rights?
It's up- That's gonna be up, that's gonna be up to the recom- it's still gonna have to be go through budget and its full commission, but the recommendations are come, are becom- coming out of Financial Management. Is that the way everybody understands it?
That's correct.
Okay? Any other?
If there's a term, I'll have conflict, I'll have to abstain if I'm not able.
Okay. We have one, Commissioner Douglas, stains from personal interest. Anybody else? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approve of those voting with one abstention. Okay, Commissioner Bryant?
I suppose these next two will be housekeeping also. Uh, we had a handout on the Public Safety Complex at Runway Center. Our current funding for that is three hundred thousand dollars, and that's attached. This next one, I would assume, is also housekeeping, even though we had a motion, we had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Hamburg, and passed unanimously to have personnel look into the uses of a human resources slash grant writer, uh, person. And when we have the next Personnel Meeting, we will be looking into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item, Commissioner Cunningham noted that we had left out one item in the enhancements for seventy-five thousand dollars for the paving of the EMA parking lot. We had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed five yes, three no, to pave the EMA parking lot for seventy-five thousand dollars and add this amount to the one-time enhancements.
In this year's budget. Next year, too, so we don't need to do anything with that item at this time.
Right.
Okay.
Next item, uh, we have is the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five draft budget. It is enclosed, and it is also an information item. Uh, we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed unanimously to approve the enclosed twenty-four, twenty-five draft budget to be published in the newspaper and be considered, uh, in the June eleventh, twenty-twenty-four public hearing. No commission action is required at this time. Committee will be, uh, the committee will recommend approval of the final budget subsequent to the public hearing on June the eleventh, and it'll be at the, in the schedule for the commission meeting, which is now on June the eighteenth.
Okay.
So we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, next, note to republix, Madam Clark.
Robin Swan by Commissioner Ewing, Tammy Graham by Commissioner Bryant, Alicia Roland by Commissioner Bryant, Laura Monks by Commissioner Spray, Talisa Reed by Commissioner Mitchell, Tammy Allen by Commissioner Mitchell, Rebecca Bradford by Commissioner Taylor, Kyla Parks by Commissioner Mitchell, Kathleen D Stewart by Commissioner Walker, Virginia Michelle Allen by Commissioner Walker, Kristy Simpek by Commissioner Sanders, William Brett Haas by Commissioner Eldridge, Candy Owen, Matt Slaton, and Linda Dunn by Commissioner Nix, Emelou Porter by Commissioner Spray, Maureen B Sisk by Commissioner Cunningham.
Any additions? Entertain a motion for approval of that list. Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas, seconds. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. I believe we're ready for new business, and I've got four items that, uh, have already been put on this. The first one, Commissioner Nix, uh, addressed the commission on an amendment to the budget that was necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, these are some, uh, budget amendments that we need, we do every year for this time for cleanup. Uh, typically, obviously, goes through the budget process, or the Budget Committee, and then on to commission, but these were some that were, with the, with the commission moving back a week to today, it's kind of putting a time crunch on everything as we dwindle down the hourglass, as I like to call it. Everything's kind of falling out, and we're trying, we're trying to make sure all the money fits within the budget this year, so these are some budget amendments for the one-on-one. Um, and I think I handed out everybody, everybody, I've got a sheet to follow with. Okay, all right. I'll start with the first one. It's for thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. That's a budget amendment to record the revenues expenditures for the Fire Marshal Grant. The next one is five hundred and seventy-three dollars. That's a budget amendment to record the revenues expenditures for Lincoln County Fire, uh, Volunteer Fire Department in Park City. The next one's for two thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's a budget amendment to record the revenues expenditures received for the Volunteer Fire Department and the Flintwood Department. Next page. Still on the, still on the, uh, general one-on-one. It's to amend the final payroll expenditures. It's an amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Next one down is the, uh, a budget amendment to correct the year-end, um, payroll for expenditures with, this is with the, this is within the sheriff and jail budget only, and the amount totals is four hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Next one, um, to budget for school resource grant received from the state of Tennessee, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Next one is the American Rescue Fund's expensed, it's been expensed through twenty-three, twenty-four so far. It's nine hundred and four thousand dollars. To, the next one is, uh, to amend the building contents insurance to exceeded cost. Um, it is for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, a hundred, excuse me, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The next one is, uh, for the reimbursable grant. If you all remember with the courthouse locks, we talked about it, I want to say with last commission meeting, it was forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. This will come back to us. This is for us to pay for it, and then we'll eventually get that back through the grant. Next one is to amend the final expenditure for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And that total, it's on the, it's the third page from there, um, is for two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that's all I have for the one-on-one general fund budget amendment.
Okay, any questions on the one-on-one amendments? Y'all understand why this hadn't gone through budget and is coming to us straight to the full commission? I'd entertain a motion to approving those amendments. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewing, seconds. Any questions on any of these, on the one-on-one amendments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
And the last one I have is for the Fund One Twenty-Two, it's the drug fund for the sheriff. It's for seven thousand dollars even. That's to cover the guardian system. And that's all I have for the one-twenty-two, and that's all I have for all the budget amendments tonight.
Any question on the one-twenty-two amendment? Would entertain a motion for approval of that? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Uh, the next item, you should have received, uh, the written, uh, policy on the, uh, birthday holidays for employees by the elected officials. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, number fourteen, it says New Year, E, New Year's Eve. Should that be New Year's Day?
No.
Oh, I see it. I can't read.
But we, we got, we got a diploma from Central, though, didn't we? I can't read, and you can't read, but- Okay. Uh, the next item we got on there is a quick claim deed, um, from the state to Lincoln County. Uh, Tim, are you gonna, you gonna read this? Ed gonna read it?
Ed's gonna read it. I'm just gonna explain.
Okay.
I'll try to explain. It's kind of confusing.
The previous item, are you gonna be, any action taken on that item?
It was an information item.
Okay. Uh, we've been working on the, the bridge at Bearden Mill, Kidd Lane, uh, the river, river bridge crossing. It's due to bid in October of this year. Um, the state bought, and, or was given the right-of-way for several of these properties. They're wanting to quitclaim deed, get back to the county now. For a simple reason, this is a county, uh, project that's handled by the state. They're paying, the federal government's paying eighty percent of it, State Tennessee's paying for twenty percent of it. So the county shouldn't be out any money on this project, but they have to do this in order to get their records straight. So, it's a resolution, Ed's fixing to read it, but that's basically what it does. It gives the land from the state back to the county for them to complete their project.
I'll let you ask any questions after Ed reads some.
Well, I, I got a call from a, uh, lady by the name of Elizabeth Peters, Associate Counsel of the State of Tennessee, and, uh, basically she said Governor Lee's already signed the quitclaim deed. He's just ready for us to accept delivery of it, and this is just a requirement of this project. They, they've got to deed it back to us. So I, uh, prepared a quick resolution. I think they wanted something somewhat formal, and I came up with this. Uh, whereas Lincoln County is eligible for a State of Tennessee Department of Transportation Bridge Project over the Elk River at Bearden Mill Road and Kidd Lane, State Project five-two-four-five-five dash two-four-three-nine dash oh-four, and I call that the project. Whereas the State of Tennessee is requiring that the land on which the project is to be located be titled Lincoln County, Tennessee, and has requested that Lincoln County, Tennessee, accept delivery of a quitclaim deed to this property on which the project will be constructed. Now therefore be it resolved that the county mayor be authorized and directed to accept the delivery of the deed from the State of Tennessee for the land for the project, and I've got it dated today, and I've got a place for, uh, Phyllis and for, uh, Bill to sign.
Okay. Commissioner Frazren makes a motion for acceptance. I have it's Commissioner Bryant, seconds. Any questions on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Uh, Ricky Pierce? Will you, Ricky, um, here is a little background on this. We're in year six of our ten-year plan on making all of our public access handicap accessible, and one of those projects is making the bandstand accessible. We're not under, uh, time pressure from the state on doing this, but Ricky's gonna explain why we're bringing this up tonight, then.
Okay, I felt like this was something that the commission needed to be aware of and might kind of make a decision on, or get your blessing. Uh, we have the money, don't need the money, we're just basically, we're going to have to make some renovations to the bandstand uh, to become ADA compliant, and the bandstand has been here longer than this courthouse, we understand. So we're gonna make some changes to it, but hopefully it look like it always been there, except for we got to put handrails all the way around the bandstand, and either to have access to the surface of the bandstand, you got to put in a chairlift or a ramp. I don't think a chairlift would be feasible. First, you, it's got to have somebody that's got to operate it. It's gonna be there all hours. The bandstand gets used a lot, uh, if you're not aware, and so it needs to be something that can, I feel like could be substantial and something that will be aesthetically pleasing. So, we're, I promise you, uh, what I'm, uh, proposing will look like it's always been there. But one of the things is, we're gonna change the bandstand's looks. And as a commissioner, I wanted y'all to be a, or a commission, I wanted you all to be aware of that. Uh, you can say Ricky Pierce told us to do it, if, that's how you want to do that. Now, the reasons why we're doing it right now, we're in year six, we're in the sixth of a ten-year plan. We're still okay as far as time-wise on this, but we have some cheap labor available that's gonna get paroled real quick, if you understand. Now, if you know someone that's a concrete finisher and is about to get incarcerated, we're okay. But, uh, we, we've got some guys talented enough to be able to do this, and as I say, we'd like to do this to the point where it looks like it's always been there, but you're gonna see guardrails, and you're gonna see a ramp, and we're gonna try to do this in such a way to make it look like it's always been there. Hopefully, that's gonna happen that way. We'll try to match the stone as much as possible, uh, make it look like something we're proud of, but it will be a change. And somebody says, well, why did you put the guardrail on the bandstand? It's been here fifty-three years. Well, the, uh, the State of Tennessee, uh, basically controls our money, and ADA complacency affects that control. Transportation, right, you know, others, and so if you're gonna eat at that trough, you have to, uh, eat the feed, and the food is provided, and so that's kind of what we're doing. We're trying to be ADA compliant as much as we possibly can as feasible. But I didn't want to do, make any decision, make it on my own. I wanted the U.S. Commissioners to be aware of. It's something we're gonna have to do. We can kick the can down the road a little bit. We can pray that somebody gets, uh, in jail that's a good concrete finisher. Uh, but, uh, right now's a good time for us, and, and we do have the funding. Every, every year, we do put ADA funding in the budget, and if there is money that's gonna be available for, I'm getting the nod back over there, so I'm, I'm, I'm feeling a little better. Uh, but we should, somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirteen thousand, and that's the bas- basically the cost of that's handrail.
Any, any questions? Entertain a motion to, uh, proceed on, uh, making the bandstand handicap accessible according to Ricky's plans. Mr. Bryant makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Taylor, seconds. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Ricky. Um, uh, the floor is now for any other new business. Recognize Commissioner Nix.
I'd like to make a motion on the floor tonight to, uh, to replace Mr. Randy Bradford on the Personnel Committee, and my nomination will be for Bonnie Colwell. Due to his health issues, we all know
Okay.
what they are, um, and the lack of having quarrel limitations here lately for the Personnel Committee, I think this will alleviate that. Just to replace him on that committee alone, uh, and I would nominate Bonnie Colwell to serve in that replacement.
Okay, do I have a sec, is that a second or?
I would like to relieve him of his duties of all the committees, just, just because he's not able to be there.
Do you accept that as a-
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
Okay, the motion then is that, uh, Commissioner Bradford would be taken off of all the committees that he currently serving on? Is that? Do I have a second? Commissioner Frazren, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
I need to then nominate?
Oh, okay, that's right.
I can nominate Bonnie Colwell for the Personnel Committee.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, Bonnie Colwell be the replacement on the Personnel Committee, but none of the other committees, you're not making a motion on?
Another, another one I know of right off my head is the Audit Committee, uh, that he's on, he serves in that capacity, uh, I would have to look through those.
Why don't we just bring those up at, at next, next month's meeting? How to get, okay, are there any other nominations for the floor for filling, uh, the position on the Personnel Committee? Do I have a second to a motion for acclamation? Commissioner Cunningham makes that. All in favor of electing Bonnie Colwell to that position by acclamation, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Any other new business? Okay, Commissioner Frazren?
Well, I mean, being, just piggybacking off of what Mr. Nix said here, I mean, would you or Ed be able to talk and discuss maybe the future of Mr. Bradford because of reputation he's not giving to Mr. Ford at the current time? And, you know, not being on, not being able to compete, he's also not a commission. So was there any process we could talk to about this, or?
I think the process, and Ed can correct me, it's gonna have to start as a grassroots from the people in his district, um, having a resolution that we have a recall, uh, on that and a replacement, is, am I wrong on that?
Uh, I, you know, I don't have, uh, any notes or files, I've looked into it recently, but it's, it's very difficult to remove a commissioner, and it has to be something pretty heinous to get a commissioner off, or a move out of a district. Uh, and of course, I know he's in the nursing home in Ardmore, I believe, and maybe he's a permanent resident there. I mean, we can look into this and, and see whether or not, uh, that's something that we can do. I don't think Mr. Bradford can now mentally resign, uh, because of his, uh, his mental capacity, his maybe diminished now. But, uh, something we can look into later, I don't, I'm not prepared to, uh,
And I-
present anything tonight.
As you spoke, I remember this was, the question that we, and I had forgot, uh, when we've been discussing this, was his power of attorney, do they have authority for them to resign from a public office that they were elected by the people for? Because that was our, I think that's what-
It'd be my opinion, no.
So. So that puts it back on the people.
I'm sorry?
That's your opinion, is it?
He, uh, his power of attorney cannot resign for him.
So, there's procedure of getting people out of elected office, but it's pretty complicated, so. But it falls back on the people who elected him. Any other, Commissioner Douglas? Okay.
I just want to let the Commissioners know, the Highway Department has a new Personnel Handbook, and it's on file, Ms. Phyllis's office, County Clerk. If y'all would like to review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Wait, don't get that your job. But, okay. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for adjournment, Commissioner Frasren seconds. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed, no?